And Tina, if you wouldn't mind saying something again, because I've just done something that might have corrected it. So if you wouldn't mind.
Yes. Hello, councillor Carr. How are you doing? Is that working?
Yes, you can tell how I solved it this time.
Okay, we got it.
Thank you.
I think we have quorum clerks, and we got three o'clock.
Mayor Stewart, yes, I'll give you the five countdown.
Okay.
Five, four, three, two, one. Over to you.
Thanks so much. Good afternoon, council. I'm calling this reconvene public hearing to order. This is reconvening from February 11th, 16th, 23rd, and 24th, and March 2nd. So moving towards a decision on this item. Just, I'm going to read through the general public script, just in case folks aren't aware of the rules and procedures. So for the purposes of confirming quorum, please ensure that your video is turned on. This meeting is convened by electronic means under ministerial order number M192. Staff and applicants will have their video disabled to keep things fair, so only council will have their video enabled. If our connection is lost during any portion of the meeting, we'll recess until the connection is restored. The live stream in this meeting has both audio and video. Video of council members speaking. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Members of the public can listen to proceedings via the livestream and YouTube link, which is tweeted out on @BedCityClerk on Twitter. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected when available. Also note, the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion include utmost respect for all genders. So remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, please avoid using gendered honorifics and either refer to the person by their first and last name or by role or by title. So for example, mayor instead of Mr. Mayor. Lastly, following the updated guidance issued on February 5th, in-person participation for these meetings is not permitted under the provincial health officer order. We have the roll call, please clerk.
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair. Councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova.
Present.
Councillor Fry.
Present.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Webb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
And councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
Meeting house quorum.
Thanks very much. First, acknowledge we're on the traditional unceded territories of Musqueam, Squamish, and Sabatois nations, and thank them for having care for these lands and are enjoying working together with them in partnership as we build this great city together. Want to thank the staff for all their hard work, too, and thanks for everything you're doing through the pandemic. A reminder that council's role at public hearing today is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application. After, right now, we're in the debate and decision phase of this particular proposal, and our options are to approve in principle the application. The second option is to refuse the application. Third is defer the application for further consideration. So we are on the rezoning at West Fourth and Bellaclava Street. This reminder that we dealt with items one and two on February 11th and 16th. On February 16th, 23rd, and 24th, council received staff and applicant opening comments for item three, heard from the public, and then closed the receipt of public comments, heard staff and applicant closing comments, and the report recommendations removed by councillor Boyle, seconded by councillor Fry, and that's what's currently on the floor. On the March 2nd, the public hearing reconvened at 6:27 PM, and then due to technical difficulties, the hearing recessed immediately without action. Other than the state, the hearing would reconvene right now, 3 PM, March 4th. So we're beginning debate on this item, and I'm going to move to the main queue now, so councillors can put their names on the list. And I believe we start with the mover of the motion. If councillor Boyle wants to go ahead, if not, I'll move to councillor Hardwick.
Yes, I sent in an alternative motion, which has been circulated.
Okay. Just ask the clerks to pull that up on the public screen whenever it's ready. Okay, I see it on the public screen? Yep, it's on the screen now.
Right. So, and this is playing on the scenarios that the mayor laid out. The third one is that we defer for further consideration. And so that's exactly what this motion is intended to do. One is that we refer this back to staff, and it has been argued throughout, and throughout the hearing that we've heard that there are opportunities to go back on this project. And that leads me to point number two, is that we are through this directing staff to work with the applicant in consultation with the community to explore a revised alternative proposal for a rental project that allows some flexibility in the unit mix, including the 35% missing middle family suitable units. I won't read out everything, but this is, I've wordsmithed this part of the amended motion in consideration of feedback that I've received from other councillors and other input. And then thirdly, that we direct staff to prepare a referral report for the revised proposal as soon as possible. I think that the intent here is very clearly to keep things moving, but moving in the right direction. And if this council approves in principle the rezoning application and enacts the zoning bylaw, it seek to expedite the development permit and building permit timeline. What we have heard over and over again from the community is that there has been an ongoing dialogue with the property owner and the developer and architect of the property, that there were some very positive moves in the right direction that would take into consideration the concerns of the community and also meet the objectives of the developer. And so that is clearly the point. This is not an either-or situation, but rather, let's do it better. Let's take into consideration neighborhood fit and the concerns that have been very clearly articulated, and make this work. And I believe that through referring it back, we can make this work in a way that is going to build trust in the community as well as much-needed rental housing supplied by the landowner and the developer. Thank you.
Thanks. So we have a motion to refer on the floor. Do we have a seconder for this?
Seconds.
Sorry, who is that?
Councillor Kirby Young.
Councillor Kirby Young seconds the motion. Okay, so now we have a speaking queue for this. Councillor Boyle.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be really brief, just to say I won't be supporting this referral back. I think we heard very clearly from staff as well as from the applicant that they have put together a project that works and that provides important and needed housing in the neighborhood. And it seems pretty clear to me that this referral would, at best, stall out the process for any number of months and result in a reduction in the number of units, and at worst, would kill the project, and we would end up with condos or housing that is certainly less needed. So in either case, I'm not inclined to support the direction that this is headed.
Thanks so much. Councillor Carr, up to five.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, first of all, my first question, and I would like your response on this, is I heard councillor Hardwick talk about the fact that she developed this amendment in consultation. She talked about legal staff, but she said, "and with others' inputs." That is exactly the phrase she used, "with others' input." We are in a public hearing process, and Mayor, I'd like you to consider what that...
Excuse me. The other input, to be specific, was from other councillors.
Councillor Hardwick, you do not have the floor.
I just want to be clear.
You do not have the floor, councillor Hardwick. Councillor Carr, go ahead.
It was from other councillors.
Councillor Hardwick, thank you. Councillor Carr.
Yeah, I just want to verify that the rules regarding talking about matters outside of outside of the public hearing process has been followed by councillor Hardwick.
Okay, thanks. I will just take that in consideration and come right back to council. I'll stop your clock there. Hey, just had a, this is a new one, so I just had to make sure I got it right. So I'm just going to ask you a couple of questions, councillor Hardwick. So under the public hearing, we had heard for all the public input on this item had been taken, and we closed the speaker's list and also the input of submissions. So as it's a quasi judicial process, we are supposed to not discuss the application with anyone. You've indicated, and councillor Carr asked the question, you know, about your, both, you know, saying that you'd spoken to others or designed your amendment with others, and then you said councillors. But I'm just asking you, have you spoken to anyone other than councillors or staff about your amendment particularly?
No, I have listened. And again, perhaps I misspoke, but I'll clarify that. And I will also point out that this amendment was put in a prior meeting. This is not a new amendment that's been amended further. This was one that came out of the public hearing. And that I certainly listened. When someone, for example, says, "that's complicated", I, you know, I'm influenced to try and make it simpler. That does not mean that I'm taking direction in the way that I'm trying to make something better.
But were you listening to the testimony as it was provided to us all in the council chambers or privately with members of the community or the proponent?
To us all, absolutely.
Right, so no private conversations with anybody outside the chambers about this?
Other than the fact that I spoke that we're having this meeting today.
Right.
But not on the amendment, no.
Okay. Okay, so then, I'll just tell you that if this does happen, so folks know in future, if there is conversations with folks outside this, then really, the option is to rule this out of order under 8.7B because it violates common law. So just for future reference, at this point, councillor Hardwick's explanation is fine with me. So you're able to proceed. And councillor Carr, you still have the floor for up to four minutes.
Great, thank you. Yes, I was, as you can imagine, concerned by the idea of receiving other input. So thank you for getting that clarified, Mayor. My question is whether or not this particular amendment referral motion has been reviewed by not just legal staff, but also planning staff, and what the response is on the part of planning staff and legal staff.
So in order to...
Point of information, yes.
Well, it'd be more of a point of order and asking if this is in order. Is that really what you're asking me, or is it?
I would like to know if it is in order, and I would also like to know through a point of information through you, Mayor, whether our planning staff can comment on the reasonableness and the feasibility, particularly... whether our planning staff can comment on the reasonableness and the feasibility, particularity of point two in the amendment. In other words, a four-story or a forty-foot building and whether or not that, if that was considered, if it's feasible or possible to, to do on that size of a lot, a MRRP project at forty feet.
Okay, I'm gonna deal with those two items separately. First, I have reviewed this with law through the city manager and it is in order as a motion. So if that answers your, your...
Thank you.
This amendment's in order, but the second I would treat as a point of information and, and ask the planning staff whether this is feasible to do, I believe is your question.
Yes.
Okay, is there planning staff on the, on the line?
There is. This is, Kelly, I would defer to Teresa O'Donnell on this one who was closer to those conversations and can at least surprise you if, if those conversations were had about a, a project that would fit within the guidelines.
And just to be clear, we, we can't bring any information in that wasn't included in the, in the public hearing. I realize this is, this is a new, this is an amendment though.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to speculate personally on, on the fly here, but if that had conversation had been had, Teresa would know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Teresa O'Donnell and Yarlee McNeil is also here with me. I believe as the mayor and council heard from the owner and the applicant that a reduced height for stories was not a financially viable form.
Okay, thanks so much, Councilor Carr. You still have about a minute and fifteen seconds?
That actually answers my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Council Frye, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I, I won't be supporting this amendment. Appreciate the intention and always appreciate good design and good community input. I did go back and listen to Mr. Evans' comments from the last set of speaking and for anybody interested, that would be at nine oh four, nine oh five on the time track and he was pretty clear that, I'm paraphrasing, not quoting here, but that the only other viable option is to develop under existing RM4 zone, which would be market condo processed as a, as a DP, which may be more pleasing to rentals, to neighbors, or not, I guess, but it would, it would not include a rezoning or public hearing. It would just go straight to DP and it would not be rental. That, that part troubles me. I think that we, we recognize that we do need more rental housing in the, in the city and certainly in, in that particular part of town. And I've been highly critical of rental projects in the past that offer DCL waivers, but I've been supportive of the MRRPs because at least we're achieving some vacancy control units out of that. And for me, that's the critical distinction in these projects. So I, I, having heard, heard our staff just now, having heard Mr. Evans, having heard Mr. Miller speak before, that this project with the MRRP component of vacancy controlled affordable units would not be possible beyond this particular envelope and built form. I, I can't suppose that there's any magical unicorn that would allow this to exist in some other capacity that nobody else is aware of. And with that said, I won't support that amendment.
Thanks so much, Council Hardwick, up to five.
Well, I'm disappointed in what I'm hearing here because there was so much discussion during the public hearing about the work that had been undertaken with the community, not just random people, but, you know, very sophisticated people in the planning and urban design world that contributed their volunteer time to come up with a, a solution that would have been both acceptable and embraced by the community and penciled out. But apparently that was, staff said, "Come on, come on in with the application" and that was sidelined at the time. And I had hoped that there would have been a path forward. I don't see this, I'll take exception to the extent that I'm allowed to without censure to the notion that there isn't an, an in-between path that can be taken here. It's, it's pretty clear to me that there, there can be and I would make a larger statement around this policy, but I know that that's prohibited in this situation. But I, I just, you know, really think that this is not an either or situation. We've seen other situations. I remember on, on Granville Street with the hospice where we were told that, you know, they would build a mansion if they didn't accept that application. And we know that full well that we have something coming back to us that has been worked in the community that, that I'm sure we will all embrace. And I really encourage council to take this very seriously because there is an opportunity here to genuinely work with the community in a, in a way that will meet objectives. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We've got, and that's it on the speaking list for this amendment, so I'm gonna call the vote. Clerks are just bringing the screen up now. Just waiting for Councilor Carr. Right, so the clerks can pull that screen up. That has failed with Councilor Kirby Young, Bly, Dominado, Boyle, Weeb, Swanson, Frye, DeGenova, Carr and myself in opposition. Okay, so we're gonna go back to the main queue. Councilor Hardwick, you have about two minutes left.
Uh, no, I'll pass.
Thanks. Councilor Dominado, you have up to five.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I've circulated an amendment to the clerks if they could bring that up. If the clerks could just let me know when it's up because I can't see.
Sure, I can. I'll just look at the public screen here. Let you know. Right, it is up now on the public screen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And in some of the vein that...
Okay, just one second, Councilor Dominado is speaking here. So go ahead, Councilor Dominado.
Uh, Mayor, in some of the vein of Councilor Hardwick's comments and the community and neighborhood feedback that we've received around this proposal, I'm wanting to address some of the concerns that we heard. And this amendment proposes additional conditions be included as part of Appendix B. Because in reviewing the urban design panels feedback, which they endorsed this, this application, but also in hearing the public feedback, some of the considerations were around architectural and landscape excellence to ensure that this building better fits the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood, as well as to explore changes or opportunities around the massing and bulk of the building as well as possible improvements to the transition to the south, which is where the single detached homes are. And so I bring that forward in light of all the speakers that we heard and I heard, you know, in terms of the speaker list, we heard from sixty or seventy speakers and of which I found, you know, probably roughly half were in favor and half were not in favor of this proposal. A number of considerations were raised around height, design, efficiency, build, transition setbacks and a number of considerations. And I'm, I'm hoping that this might strike some balance and address some of those community concerns. I, I will address this head on that this is not the balaclava option that was referred to by many speakers as that is not what we are actually looking at today. And in, in fact, and that's why I was asking some questions in the last, one of the last meetings around the current policy framework. And there were questions asked, I think, by my colleagues about, you know, why there are limitations. Obviously, the applicants have said they want to do a rental on this site. They could readily do strata condo as was noted by staff and Councilor Frye recently, but they are particularly passionate about delivering rental and there were very limited policy options. And so this is the one that was available. And so I am, I'm hoping that this might address some of the, the resident concerns and obviously leave it open to council to debate.
Thank you so much. Just, sorry, just pulling up the screen here. Oh, that's fine, thanks. So I'm gonna move us over to the amendment queue. There we go. Councilor Carr, Councilor Kirby Young. Councilor Carr, up to five.
Uh, yes, thank you. If I could ask a point of information through you to staff?
Sure.
Mayor, great. I noticed that the language that Council Dominado has in her amendment uses the word "explore", changes to "massing and bulk" and make improvements for the transition. I've read the conditions of approval thoroughly and there are already many suggestions in, not suggestions in there, but there are many points in there that, that do relate to that. But they, they are called suggested directions. Would there be a problem in changing the word "explore" to incorporate? Because I think that they may already be being explored through the language in the Appendix B, conditions of approval.
Yeah, I can't, so I mean, you are kind of asking on the floor for an advice on an amendment.
That's correct. Whether or not the word, I'm wondering if planning would find, and maybe even legal, would find it all right to be able to change the word "explore" to incorporate?
Yeah, again, a difficult question to answer, I think. I guess if your question was, what would be the legal ramifications, is that a concern for you? So for example, would it move it from an approval to a referral? Is that?
No, I'm not worried about it. I'm just worried about, I've never been in the situation actually to, whether, I've read all the conditions of approval in, in, in past and they, there, there is a bit of sort of exploration language in them and I'm wondering if that is legally essential or if it can be an actual direction from council through this amendment to, to require, in essence, to, from changing the word "explore" to incorporate would be a requirement, I would gather. I am looking for legal advice on that, yes.
Right, yeah. So, so what I can tell you right now is I, I've been checking all the amendments as they've been coming in with legal and planning. There are no concerns as it's currently written from, from legal or, or planning about the direction of this amendment. However, in my previous checking, I, I was conscious of the fact of when you add a certain number of things and requirements, they, they skip from being an approval with work, then further work by the planning department and, and development permit process and stuff to a requirement that would have to be negotiated with the, with the, with the applicant, which would then trigger a referral essentially. So I, I, I'm not sure exactly if that is, I think that's where we're drifting into. Explore leaves approval with explorations afterward require would mean that it would have to be done beforehand. I mean, I can, so the only way I can really check it with legal is for you to move it and then for me to check if it's in order or not. That's, that's kind of my option as a chair.
Okay, I'll take me off the list and I'll, because I would like to hear legal's opinion on that. Thank you. I'll go back on, but I'll, thank you.
Okay, thanks. We've got, next we have Councilor Kirby Young, up to five.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Notwithstanding the discussion with respect to specific wording, I'm sort of gonna speak to the intent of this amendment to approve the report with conditions. And I think from my perspective, the spirit is to be responsive from the feedback that we heard very clearly, unequivocally from the community, that they felt that the design as proposed was abrupt in terms of its interface with adjacent neighbors and in the context. And yes, this is a change for the neighborhood. It was always a challenge. I think it's one of the biggest ones that we have at council when we get something to come forward in sort of the process of a rezoning in the absence of an identified community plan that would make it more explicit for neighbors to understand where their community was going to develop in the future as opposed to sort of these, you know, sometimes referred to as spot rezonings or individual situations that don't have, have a specific program that's governing it, in this case, the MRRP or the Modern Income Rental Housing Pilot Project, but don't have sort of identified longer-term planning guidelines for an area specifically that allow for that change. And so in response to the feedback that we're hearing loud and clear from the community about a desire to be respectful of transition to the other neighbors, I think that this amendment acknowledges that and would work to identify a lot of the concerns that were raised about sufficient setback, how the building will interface with the neighborhood and some context from that perspective. And I think, given the fact that we do need to make room for neighbors, but we want to do it in a way that those neighbors are welcomed, I think this is a thoughtful amendment and so for that reason, I'm going to, thank you.
Thanks very much. Sorry, council, I, my mouse is acting up and I accidentally cleared the queue. So I, I do think I remember Councilor Boyle was on and I can't remember who else was on the queue. Sorry about that.
I think Councilor DeGenova was on ahead of me, Mayor.
Sorry, okay, great. Councilor DeGenova, you have up to five minutes. Go ahead.
Thanks very much. I very much appreciate this amendment that has been put forward by Councilor Dominado and I think that it does strike a balance considering what I heard from the public and, you know, understanding that, you know, sometimes we have public hearing items that aren't controversial. Sometimes they're very controversial. Sometimes there's more speakers or more correspondence on one side than the other. Seeing some balance in that, but also trying to find balance in this and, and in a genuine way that would see the applicant look at and hear the concerns. And I think that input is the right word. I understand that maybe that was misunderstood, you know, by, by some, some council members or perhaps one council member. But I just, I feel it's really important that we do consider, like it is input. It's, it's legal input, it's public input, it's the way we're supposed to receive input, which is, is through the public process here. And I think that it not only strikes that balance, but I'd like to ask a point of information through you, Mayor, to staff, if I may, and that is regarding the word "explore" and incorporate. Incorporate means you must do something and I see that Councilor Dominado has quite a broad amount of, of, you know, and I, I agree with them. I think it's great. That's why I want to support this. But if, if the applicant was to have to incorporate all of these, even if it was impossible, would they then not be able to move forward with the project even if in good faith they tried and couldn't do that? That's my question. Would we tie them to something that would add a technicality? That they'd be right back here, maybe on something very small, just because of one word in a motion?
Right. So the, so the question is...
My question is, would, would incorporate possibly mean that they could participate in this in good faith in trying to consider the input in the list that Councilor Dominado has, has presented and that I understand will be added possibly to an appendix? But if they were to have to incorporate every single piece of that and they still have to explore it before they incorporate it, what I'm asking, I thought it was pretty clear, is would incorporate mean that if they could not do it, they'd be right back here before us?
And, and again, it's, Councilor DeGenova, I think that, you know, it needs to kind of be on the floor for me to, to go and access.
But it is on the floor. Right now, the word "explore" is on the floor and I'm asking if staff thinks that that word over incorporate...
No, no, it's not, it's not on the floor. There's no, there's no amendment at this point. All we're doing is, is discussing.
No, I'm talking to Councilor Dominado's amendment that she's made that I've seconded. It says "explore" technically right now and to get the information that I would need for incorporate, I, I'm asking that question in my time now.
I, I don't understand. So, so what's on the wor, on the floor is "explore"?
Exactly. So I'm asking staff about "explore."
Okay, how they would interpret "explore"?
Does exploring, does exploring this, instead of per se incorporating this, allow for, I mean, is there some checks and balances here with the development permit?
Sure.
You know, the issuance of that?
So I will ask them about how...
They wouldn't be able to issue that?
I'm not gonna get them the juxtaposed, uh, proposal that hasn't officially been made.
Or require?
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask them what, how they interpret "explore" and perhaps there'd be staff answer to that one?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Teresa O'Donnell and I want to thank...
And I want to thank council and appreciate the question. We've we've got some very, very detailed conditions on the first page of appendix B that is requiring reductions in height. We do believe that the idea of exploring allows us to shift some density and massing around on this site without losing any units. And so we we appreciate that, that the flexibility that that gives us. It it is a slight difference from incorporate. We can certainly make either word work, but but we do feel like the the very specific guidance about exactly how much reduction we can achieve is is stated in condition 1.1 and condition 1.2 on the first page of appendix B.
Okay, Counselor DeGenova, we're over time, but I hope that answers your.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, you did ask me to repeat my question twice. I did. But I will be wholeheartedly supporting this amendment, and I will not support a further amendment to incorporate, just to save time. I'll say that now.
Thanks, Counselor Boyle, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. I will admit I feel slightly sheepish about how much time we're spending on the wordsmithing of this. But I do want to clarify, and I think I heard this from the planning department just a moment ago, but that my my question, point of information or clarification is this language says explore changes if that exploration happens and nothing changes. I just want to confirm that the project would go ahead and that this language doesn't block anything or significantly delay.
Right, so I can, I I have explored this with law. I can just report to you, Counselor Boyle, what's been said to me is, you know, our three options are to approve, to reject, or to refer. Those are the three outcomes we'll get with this with this amendment. It it is not a referral. It would be approved with with these suggested changes to be undertaken by staff during the development process. So that that's what I've been informed by by law.
Okay, well, I will just say I am comfortable then that this doesn't stop anything. I think that this project is is an important and needed form of housing in a in a beautiful neighborhood that families will love to live in. I I wouldn't be supportive of further roadblocks to this type of housing. But I guess hearing pretty clearly that this amendment doesn't necessarily or significantly change anything. I I sort of, I feel indifferent to it, is how I will say that briefly. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move forward. Thanks.
Okay, Counselor Carr, here, get some time left here.
Yes, thank you. So before I decide whether to table an amendment, I am, I I really asking for a response from staff through a point of information through you. In terms of the conditions of approval, they're broken up into two sections. In urban design section 1.1, there's no equivocal language. So it is design development at the proposed height to reduce the scale of the building and approve neighborhood compatibility as follows. Reduce the building height, blah, blah, blah. But then in 1.2, there's a lot of conditions, but they're listed as suggested directions, which is why I wanted to know if I could change the word to implement rather than explore. And so maybe my real question to staff is in follow, in that section 1.2 and all the details in there, do you, do staff work with the developer to to implement the, but maybe with some slight modifications? But generally, yes, follow all those guidelines? Or is even any one of those sections could they be thrown out the window when you get to the the actual final satisfaction of conditions of approval?
And quickly, staff, we're kind of at the five minute mark.
Yes, thank you for the question. That's a, that's a great question and a great distinction. Of course, the conditions were written prior to receiving all this public input and feedback, and we've heard loud and clear that it is the expectation of the city council and the community that we work diligently to achieve all of these conditions. So they certainly could have been written stronger, and in hindsight, they probably should have been.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Dominado, we have the five. Well, you might be on mute there.
Sorry, Mayor. No, I'll, I'll, I don't know if there's anything further. So I won't speak unless there's other amendments coming, but.
Okay, I don't see anybody else on the list for this amendment, so I will call the vote. And Counselor DeGenova.
Sorry, I just emailed that over. Mr. Mayor, in favor, please.
Okay, vote assist, please, for Counselor DeGenova in favor. And if you just want to pull this up on the screen, please, the result is approval with none opposed. Okay, council, I'm going back to the main queue. Counselor Dominado, you have the floor for up to two minutes.
I'll I'll go off for now and let others speak. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five.
That was a holdover, Mayor.
Okay, I don't have anybody else on the list. Counselor Carr, go ahead, up to five.
Yes, so I'm speaking to the amended motion, and I'm going to speak in support of the amended motion. And I I'm going to speak in support because I I really understand the community's concern and desire and invested effort into an alternative project, the Balaklava project. But I have heard clearly from staff, first of all, I heard clearly from the owner and the applicant that that option was not going to be one that could be pursued. Then reiterated today by staff and also re-affirmed for us by Counselor Frye in terms of having reviewed the videotape from a previous part of this public hearing in terms of what the owner and the applicant have said, which is the alternative to this project is is to go with what is allowed under the zoning, which is a condo development. I I think we need more rental housing in this city. It's a desperate need. And I have supported MRRP projects because frankly, I helped modify the MRRP program to ensure affordability was in fact real affordability, 30% of a household income. And those units would have vacancy control. You know, we don't have anything else with vacancy control. I think that those are our two hallmarks that I think are really important that we need to expand upon within the the city housing programs. So I'm happy with that. I really heard a lot of concern around the building fit, so I did go back and look at the urban design panel. And I'm just going to reiterate for for the public really, but for fellow counselors as well, you know, the kinds of conditions in here. And I'm, and thank you, Ms. O'Donnell, for affirming for me that you've heard loud and clear the concern of the public and concern of council around making sure that these these conditions of approval are are going to be as much as possible, but going to be implemented because they're really good ones, and they do answer a lot of questions that the public raised. So I'm going to just read some of them in case you have forgotten when you originally read the documents. And so this is incorporating high quality textured materials, traditional residential materials to fit with the neighborhood, articulate building facades to better relate to the scale and proportion of surrounding buildings, provide direct access from each ground floor unit to the adjacent public sidewalk with porch entry canopies to, again, fit with the the style of buildings in the neighborhood, provide individual private patios with landscape buffers interfacing with the sidewalk and high quality low fencing, reconfiguring the parquet to minimize its footprint, including large scale tree planting off the slab. Set the north parquet wall adjacent to existing mature city trees. Propose retaining wall within the setback area, substituting layering shrubs and tree plantings in a natural pattern. Developing a landscape feature at the northwest corner coordinated with the outdoor amenity area, improving pedestrian experiences with street furniture and benches inside the property line. Utilizing new landscaping that complements and enhances landscaping, that complements and enhances the landscaping on adjacent properties. Large shade scale shade trees are needed to fit into the context. The parquet should be reduced in size and pulled in from property lines. Relocate the garbage and recycling out of the south area. Developing the south setback area as a secondary outdoor amenity with opportunities for urban agriculture and possibly a children's play area. Lush layered planting with flowering trees and shrubs such as magnolia and dogwood. Developing the southwest corner as a landscape feature, installing a row of upright deciduous trees inside the property line. And there's many more. I just cited a number. And I know that doesn't take, and I think Ms. O'Donnell actually, or our staff person actually cited the the reduction in height, not by a huge amount, but there is also a required reduction in height. I think that staff have listened and worked with the the developer and applicant in making changes. It may not be enough to satisfy everyone within the community, but I think a genuine effort has been made to make this fit within the neighborhood. And as I said, provide rental housing and truly affordable rental housing for the long term.
Thank you. Counselor Boyle, up to five.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to speak strongly in support of this project for a whole number of reasons. The most central of which is that this is badly needed rental housing. Six stories of rental housing with 20% of it being vacancy controlled. It's on an arterial as as council and many members of the public have heard me say regularly, I think we should be building more rental housing off of arterials so that we're not using renters as buffers to our main streets for the rest of residents. But in the meantime, this is on an arterial. I think it fits. I think it's housing that will be beloved homes for people, and I think it's important. I also want to state that I think it shouldn't take this long to build this type of housing. This doesn't feel like the speed at which you would address a housing crisis and a rental housing crisis and vacancy rate like the one we have. So I would like to see policy changes down the road that make it easier to build this type of housing without and particularly make it easier to build the kind of rental housing that we need relative to how easy it is to build condos and large, single family homes. So I I think we have a very clear imbalance in the type of housing we know we need and the processes that we make those types of homes go through in order to be built. In the meantime, I will absolutely be supporting this project. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to Counselor Swanson, up to five minutes.
Yeah, this is a hard one. When I look at the pros and cons, the in the con column is the owner is getting double the FSR, doesn't have to pay the DCLs, doesn't have to pay the CACs. The affordability in the new building is probably less than or maybe barely equal to what's affordable in the current buildings. Upzoning increases land prices, which is a major cause of housing unaffordability. And the non-MRRP units are only going to be affordable basically probably for the top 20% of renters. Then on the positive side, it's rental and not condo, although we could deal with this by zoning for rental only, which I think we should do. It has vacancy control in a few units, which is good, and it probably won't gentrify. So that's what I'm going to try and balance out in my vote.
Thank you, Counselor Swanson. Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So speaking to the final project and the amended amended motion that we have on the floor now for this project, it was a tough one, and I think it was a tough one because, as others have stated, we do need rental housing in the city. I look at the fact this building was built in 1942, so it's 79 years old. It's coming, it's getting up there for a building. And I recall asking the question what the state of the current buildings were during the question section of the public hearing. And I saw that a reporter had commented that he had difficulty to restrain himself from laughing out loud when that question was asked because because he remembered partying during its days at UBC and implying that the quality of the building wasn't there. And so what you have on the site now was clearly an aging product of a rancher's style with a landlord that had a patrol intents and purposes. And what we heard, been a good landlord for a long period of time and providing reasonably priced rental accommodation. But now, given the age of the buildings and the site, they're looking to redevelop it, and it will redevelop. So the question really is how, and we do strongly need that rental housing. Having said that, it's really dismaying when you hear such vehement community concern that was raised against a specific building, and so I wouldn't have been able to approve the report as it was. I feel much more comfortable doing that now with the amendment because I do think that it's respectful of what we heard from the community. I recognize the applicant did make a number of changes, such as more entry arbers was mentioned in the urban community garden, putting things like the the rubbish or the garbage inside the building and things like that. So, you know, I'm hopeful that they would also be receptive to sort of an expanded conversation around some of the pieces that have been raised around considering the massing and the bulking. And really, I think the neighborliness in terms of transition to the adjacent neighbors here who are, I think, welcoming some form of housing there, but hoping to retain part of what they love about the magic of the neighborhood. And these are people that have lived there a long time, and it's very personal, right? When that's your home and that's where you've been, I think people care about their community. So I I think that the amendment, and so the amended option that we have on the floor tonight, is respectful in terms of taking that committee feedback into consideration and striking the balance between this need. I really hope we get to a point that we have some broader base policies in place that we don't have to kind of go through this consideration for each site, and we can set some precedence for some great projects that are supported by the community. But there's also clarity around zoning as our neighborhoods continue to evolve, as they inevitably will, as we have more people to accommodate and as these buildings age. So it was really important to me that we came up with an outcome that responded to community concern and feedback. And I'm hopeful that all of those people that came out to speak over this protracted period of time, I know it's taken some time, so I appreciate people's endurance and patience in hanging in there, that they feel that they were heard and that some changes were incorporated. And I think that there is a willingness, what I'm certainly hearing from staff and others, and certainly council is sending that signal if they support this as it's put forward, to really hear that and try to transition this building in a neighborly way that feels like it will be welcomed by the community, but still provide that housing that we desperately need. And I think the other thing to note is that we're seeing a lot of shifts in given the work from home and the pandemic and people moving out of the city and trying to find more space. And people cannot afford to buy, but the rental housing remains really important, and the vacancy rate remains really low. So it is important for this council not just to approve housing, but to approve the needed and the right type of housing. The last thing that I'll say is that when you just look at the numbers practically and you look at the cost for these modern income rental units, and it's eight, sort of roughly 20%, eight at of 35 units, it's quite significant because if you're renting a one bedroom, you would be paying 1,200 under the MRRP versus the average for a newer rental building on the west side, 100, almost $2,000. If you are a two bedroom, might be a couple, maybe a second room or a couple with a kid, that you'd be paying 1,600 versus 3,059. And in real terms, that's a huge difference when you're trying to make it work on limited salaries because unfortunately, our salaries do not match the cost of living in Vancouver, and that's the challenge. So we continue to chip away through these types of programs at that balance. So those are my comments, and for that reason, I'll support it. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Frye, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Counselor Kirby Young, for sparing everybody the anecdote that I would have shared about me partying in those houses back in the day. They've seen better days, and for sure, I think replacing those units with new purpose-built rental, including vacancy control, is going to be a tremendous asset for the neighborhood and for the city. I want to just jump in and quickly highlight my 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 one little little sort of caveat that I that I want to reflect in the in the Urban Design Report, Section 1.12. I think it's really critical, the retention of that delightful grove of cedar trees there on fourth. I think that's really important. And I note that in the Urban Design Report, it does note to the applicant, retention of the three cedar trees that provide natural scale, enhance the public realm and represent an important neighborhood natural amenity. Assurances this is feasible should be provided by an arborist and changes to the parcade will be required. And so I really want staff to hear that as, I think, a critical distinction. Let's not sacrifice these trees to make a bigger parcade. Let's do what we can to not just needlessly throw away a wonderful natural asset on this block in the name of a couple of spots to make houses for cars. Appreciate that we're making houses for people, but we don't need the houses for cars so much. I just also want to reflect that in speaking to Mr. Evans, the developer, he did give a lot of assurances that that there will be refining at UDP, at Urban Designs, and that he's open to that and working further with the community to address a lot of those. And I think that's important reflection, including with Counselor Dominado's amendments to just how this can be the best that it can be and really make people more happy. Because it's not just this simple binary of like, yeah, build it or no, don't build it. Let's try and make this a great project. But I do want to reflect also that my conversation with Mr. Evans resulted, back when we were first discussing this project, to go to refer it to public hearing. So before it went to got referred, and we were told by folks in the community that there was, the developer didn't want it to go to public hearing. And it seemed a little incredulous, and sure enough called Mr. Evans. And he said, no, absolutely, that's not the case. And we had a letter to that effect that also emphasized that there was no intention from the developer or the owner not to send this to public hearing. So there was clearly a case of misinformation. And I fear that there was a lot of misinformation unintended or otherwise that came about over the multiple days and hours of public hearing that we had to hear for this project. And I'm afraid that if we continue down this path on a relatively simple and somewhat benign six story rental apartment building on an arterial, and we spend this amount of time and honestly wading through a lot of misinformation, it's a bad precedent. So I hope that we can find a better way to manage these kinds of conversations because I fully support and appreciate the role of the public hearing and the opportunity for the public to speak to these things. But when the public are speaking from a place of misinformation, I don't think it's helpful. It drives a further wedge. It creates more bifurcation. And it eats up a lot of valuable time. And it's not just our time as counselors. It's this tremendous amount of staff resource that goes into this. And I just hope that we can find a better way and really just cut through a little bit of this misinformation stuff before it gets to a five day public hearing. So I'll be voting in support of this project. And I'm very hopeful that Mr. Evans and team will be really working with the community to ensure that this is a great project. And of course, we're retaining the cedar grove. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Counselor Dominado. Up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you to all the residents who both wrote and called in. And I want to actually pick up on a thread around that it's not a simple binary conversation and reflect that in listening to the different residents who spoke, those who spoke in favor, those who spoke in opposition, is I didn't hear anyone saying, no, we don't want housing in our community or in our neighborhood, and we don't want new neighbors. That was not the message I heard. It's often particularly gets exacerbated on areas of social media where we see the yimby nimby debate. And I didn't hear that. I did hear considerations around the change for the neighborhood, consideration around, as we heard, height and bulk amassing adjacent buildings, potential implications for the neighboring homes. And as I was reflecting on that, I was reflecting on how this ongoing tension that we have in our neighborhoods as they're evolving. And I was looking at my own neighborhood and some of the streetscape and the diversity of different buildings. So we've got some low rises. We've got some six story rentals and strata. And when you look back at pictures of Vancouver 100 years ago and how much the city has changed, and certainly 50 years from now, how different our neighborhoods are going to look. But I wanted us to respond to the concerns we heard from residents. And I hope that some of the amendments address those concerns because that is the intent, is to address them and that through the follow up process with staff and leading up to DP that some of those conditions, those further conditions are met. I was also reflecting on the, there was a speaker who spoke to us, I believe she was a neighbor, I believe, a homeowner who has a basement suite, secondary suite. And in speaking, she spoke in support and said that she'd had 124 applications, I believe, for her suite and I think 20 viewings. And she took that as indicative of some of the demand for rental. And, you know, her message to us as counsel was to think about not only the residents of today, but the residents of the future. And that this is an area that is well sought after. We've also heard from the local BIA, the critical importance of that density to our small businesses. And I know we have a number of members on council who have been in the area, small business. And so that also struck me in considering this proposal. I do appreciate there were some changes from what was initially proposed. And we saw that in the presentation from the applicants. And some clarification around why this was brought forward and the desire for the rental. I think there has been some confusion and just acknowledging that around the conversations that were happening with residents and then the applicant's desire to go ahead with what we're actually dealing with and debating today. And I did hear that loud and clear. And that was communicated by Mr. Evans, but as well by the Millers when I asked them about this. And because they actually said they really wanted to deliver rental. They see the need. And this rental includes below market, which is, and that's what even spoken to by my number of my colleagues, and targeting that $30,000 to $80,000 range. So in that respect, so I'll just end by saying I support the proposal and the amended recommendations with the conditions that have been added. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've got Counselor Weeb next.
Yeah, I really appreciate this conversation. I appreciate Counselor Frye bringing up some of the concerns of the process. I think this council continues to listen to the public and try to figure out how we can find ways to deliberate on projects in a different way and ensure that we are finding ways to bring projects that meet the needs of the city as well as the citywide issues that we are dealing with. So I do think that we've heard a lot of opportunities here for us to move forward a bit differently, recognizing that there are different chain issues that need to be dealt with, and there's better ways to process forward. I also like the fact he brought up the fact that we have the three cedar trees and that there is aspects of this report that are going to ensure that those three cedar trees are continued. There's a lot of work going on right now with the mental health of being connected with nature. And that if you can see three trees living in an area that's 30% covered and or within 300 meters of a park, your mental health is substantially increased. And here we have three beautiful cedar trees that are going to be kept as well as extra trees on the west and on the south side that will be brought forward, as well as it's close to what will be a new creek at Volunteer and Tatlo within 300 meters away. And it's in an area that's over 20% covered. And there's opportunities for us to increase the forest cover. I do think that there's been a lot of work to make changes to this building that I do support. And in my earlier comments, I did talk about how this neighborhood has lost a generation. There's a generation that has not been able to find housing. And we need opportunities like this to bring a generation back and ensure that the generation that's currently going through school in the area has a place to find and live. And also people that want to live in place and people that want to find accessible units that they can rent in their neighborhood and continue to be part of the clubs and groups that they are. So I will be supportive of this. I think there's been a lot of great changes and I appreciate all the feedback.
Thanks, Counselor Weeb. On to Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks very much. I appreciate, I'll try not too much to echo the comments of my colleagues. But I too grappled and struggled with this. I think that it's important that we do include and not even just include, to try and meet targets of rental in every one of Vancouver's neighborhoods. That being said, it's important that we do that in a way that strikes the balance with the neighborhood fit, the character of the neighborhood, and the needs of the neighborhood. I've received emails, not specifically on this project, where there are neighborhoods that are upset. Some neighborhoods are getting more rental than their neighborhood or than other neighborhoods in the city. And I think that it is something that, as this council, you know, I'm encouraged that we're moving forward with this. And when I see sort of the numbers on rental housing and what we have done, that's great, but we can't stop. And my concern is, is that we're already in a race against affordability. And it's not in our favor. And we need to do what we can to catch up. That being said, I think that we can do that, and we can respect neighborhood input. We can be thoughtful with some of the comments, with some of the concerns of the residents in the neighborhood. The last thing I want to do in, you know, lending my vote and my support to a project that moves, if it moves forward in neighborhood, is to create divisiveness between the people who are living there or who own that rental and the neighbor. But I do think that it is important that, you know, and to Counselor Weeb's comments about, you know, missing a generation, I think her entire is in that situation right now. And we need to do what we can to catch up. To Counselor Boyle's comment on, you know, how long it takes to deliver this housing, and again, not to touch anyone's mouths, I agree. And that's why, I mean, we have the short program. I wish it, you know, we were looking at rental tenure for that now, but the policy doesn't apply right now unless you're social housing. That being said, it is social housing or rental tenure, not social housing and rental tenure. Well, I've met with our planning staff many times, I know they know this, to see, like, what can we do to make sure that the most affordable housing in each neighborhood is able to move forward. And maybe that's rental tenure. Maybe that's not just if there's a nonprofit component as well. Because it's important that we calculate, we consider, when I hear how long a project has kind of been in the works, as to what the affordability would have been then versus the affordability now. And, you know, hearing from people who would like to live in this neighborhood who can't because of the affordability, or they can, but it would be a basement suite over a, you know, a home that really would fit their family. And that home can take, you know, many forms. It could be a apartment, could be a single family residential home. If some people are lucky enough and that's what they want, some people don't want that. A town home, I think, co-housing, we have to consider all of the options, affordable homeownership. But this is what's before us today, and this will create homes for people. That being said, I'm encouraged and I thank Counselor Dominado for her addition to this. That really does genuinely show that we have not only heard, but there's an expectation that community concerns are not only addressed, but celebrated and explored, you know, for that neighborly fit, our neighborhood fit piece. Because the worst thing I could also see happen is all of our neighborhoods become the same. What I love about Vancouver's neighborhoods is they're also very unique and very different. And that's something that I hear often about Kitsalau. And I know that from my own experience with Kitsalau. So I will leave it there, Mayor, and I will be voting in support of this.
Thanks, Counselor Hardback.
Yes, thank you. Well, where do I start? First of all, this site does not meet the MERP policy guidelines. I started at that point, sorry, I can hear breathing in the background, starting with the definitions of the number of underutilized sites. But it doesn't seem to matter when applications don't conform or are noncompliant with the policy, we seem to move forward anyway. There has been tremendous community consultation and involvement in this, and it has not been 50/50. I think any examination would show that there has clearly been massive organization within the Kitsalau community about this. And it is disheartening because there was such a sense that there was going to be collaboration between the community and the developer on this. But then, and I guess I'm hopeful that that will resume in some form, but I can't imagine how that trust is going to be recovered. It was referred to here as being misinformation. Well, I guess the public were misinformed about the developer's willingness to try and work with them, because that's certainly the impression that has come forward from the community. Yes, we will be creating rental housing. Yes, everybody is enthusiastic about creating rental, more rental housing. Certainly, that's the legacy in the Kitsalau that my family has lived in, you know, for generations and now into my children and children's children, hoping to be able to stay living in this neighborhood. It is not a single family neighborhood. It hasn't been for a very, very long time. It is one of the densest nodes of apartment dwellings, both long terms and purpose built rental and secondary rental housing. That's a fact. So it is anticipated that there would be more rental housing. But looking at this, we're losing six duplex three bedrooms with affordable monthly rental, getting net two more, eight units instead of the six. But those are all studio, one bedroom and two bedrooms that are significantly more expensive on a room by room basis. And let's not forget, you're talking about 20% here of affordable and forgetting about the 80% unaffordable and what the impact of that inflationary land lift is going to be as we continue to experience this widespread inflation in the land values of the property within our boundaries. So the devil is in the details on these projects. And, you know, nobody's going to argue once again that we need to be enabling more rental housing. I think nobody would argue that the owner could have any time over the last decade built four story luxury condos and sold them. But I want us to remember that if that was the most profitable thing for the property owner to do, he would have done it already, that this is ultimately a better deal with this MERP project for the developer than building market condos. So I'm sure that the community will continue to monitor the situation closely going into the next stages of the development. I urge the developer to work with the community and to take their concerns seriously. And I, just in my final remarks, even though I'm not allowed to be critical and I have to be careful what I say, every decision that we make based on flawed policy are ultimately flawed decisions. And I remain hopeful that in some time, we're going to be able to get sufficient data, real data for evidence based decision making instead of aspirational decision making, which is what we continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carr, if I could just, I was just going to make a few comments in the debate period. So if I can, as Deputy Mayor, if you could.
Absolutely. Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Actually, I'm Deputy Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, the months did change. Yes, sorry. The crown goes to Counselor Weeb. So are you okay if I go for five minutes?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thanks very much. So, Council, just wanted to say, I remember living on Seventh and Bella Clava in a basement apartment in my kind of late twenties. And it was a fun place to live, great part of the city, lots of good things happening there. Do remember raccoons inhabiting my roommate's bedroom, which was kind of funny, you know, at that point in your life, but not very funny if you're in your 30s or 40s or you're trying to raise a family. And I think basement apartments are a good solution for a certain segment of the population. But then I think about these rental units, and I think about how they're secure. I know folks, I lived in tons of Kits basement apartments. And, you know, we're forever getting kicked out because of, because family members are moving in or whatever reason. So I think the key here is, the MERP stuff is great, the vacancy controlled suites that are going to start people off on the right track are really good. that are going to start people off on the right track are really good, but also the secured rental units that, of course, are going to get filled. Folks are going to live there, and they're going to be people that are going to contribute greatly to the community while enjoying one of the best spots in the world. So I do welcome the debate. I do think that, quite proud of our public hearing process where we have so many people that can come in and feel free and safe enough to state their opinions and organize. I mean, that's what democracy is. So, and really wanted to thank council and staff for taking part of this process. I think that's really important. So here we are, that's it for me. But I just wanted to say, I'll be supporting this. I think it's a very good project. And I do think that staff will work with community as we go further towards putting shovels in the ground here. So thanks. And councillor Weeb, I'm finished, and I can have the chair back?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks very much. Okay, so that's it for the list of speakers, and I'm going to call a vote now.
Point of privilege, Mr.
Yes, councillor.
In favor, please.
Okay, thanks so much. Get the clerks to do that. Okay, that's been recorded. Staff, if you can put the screen up, the vote up on the screen. Council, so that has passed with councillor Hardwick in opposition. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Councillor Boyle, seconded by councillor Carr, all in favor, yay.
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 Posed, nay. Great. Thank you so much, council. We are finished this item. Thanks to the clerks and staff and the all who participated. And so I'll bid you a good evening, and we'll see you again soon.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks.
Thanks for that.
Yeah.
Good night.
Good night.